Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, wcsoh.org. Click on our district link and select Board of Education, then Board Doc's Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening. The first being Agenda Item 6.01, the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.04. Please state the Agenda Items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table at the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Mr. Griffith, would you please hold the roll?
Mr. Byrd? Ms. Condon?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Bellardo?
Here. We invite you to stand with us and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. (Clerk) The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the God who governs the nation, who governs the nation, who governs all, who governs all, who governs all. Thank you very much. We move on to Agenda Item 3, which is District Highlights and Recognizations. 3.01 is Retirement Recognition. This is just a really awesome thing that we get to do to recognize all of you who are so lucky that you get to be into the retirement world right now. How we're gonna do this is I'm gonna go up to the podium in just a second. I'm gonna ask my colleagues and Dr. Kellogg to stand at the front of the table here, then we're gonna call you up one by one and kinda do some retirement recognition. We're very excited about this. Let's go to the front of the table. I have just a couple of things that I would like to say. Let me just share with you. First of all, we would like to say congratulations. Collectively, and I always find this to be very interesting, listen to this information. Collectively, the Westerville City School District is losing 972 years of combined experience from you, the licensed and classified staff. You all don't look that old to me. That's just awesome. Regardless of where this phase of your life journey takes you, please know how proud we are of the work that you have accomplished during your time here. Please understand these are not words that I'm reading, but from the board and the administration, we really mean this. Your legacy will be treasured for many years to come as the students that you taught and guided move on to become successful adults. In addition, you have touched the lives of your peers. Seeing the results of your work firsthand provides us, we believe, with an optimistic outlook regarding our schools, our community, and indeed, our country. Because you have touched the life of a child and have touched our future leaders as well. We wish you a very long, healthy, enjoyable retirement. This year's will be, we will honor you, recognize you, much in the manner of graduation. For the last several months behind your backs, the superintendent's office, is it okay to throw you under the bus like that? The superintendent's office has been collecting descriptive words from your peers. Anybody wanna revoke their retirement? The superintendent's office have been, they have been collecting descriptive words from your peers which have been put into a keepsake that you get to take. Each retiree in attendance, I'm gonna call you up to the podium, and we ask that you stand facing the audience as I share the three words that your coworkers, you like this, don't you? As we share the three words that your coworkers say best describe you. Then you will then proceed down the receiving line and you will get this keepsake that I was just referring to, and you will receive a, somebody hold up, a pink carnation. You may or may not know that pink is the color of, what's the pink the color of? Appreciation. It is that too. But for flowers, it is the color of appreciation, and we felt that that was the most appropriate color. So I'll be calling you up, and I am attempting to pronounce everybody's name correctly. So this is awesome. I will have you come up here and face the audience. So with that, from Alcott, excuse me, I'm sorry, from the Early Learning Center Preschool, Luann Kowalski. Get Luann, eh? This is what Luann's colleagues have to say about her. Luann is described by her peers as funny, dedicated, and loyal. Ladies and gentlemen, Luann Kowalski. From Emerson Magnet, Carolyn Smith. Carolyn is described by her peers as nurturing, helpful, and compassionate. Congratulations. From Faust Elementary School, Mary Ann Cunningham. Mary Ann is described by her peers as dedicated, intelligent, and giving. Huber Ridge Elementary School, Mary Jane McDonough. Mary Jane looks nervous. Mary Jane is described by her peers as dedicated, loving, and as all kindergarten teachers should be, patient. From Mark Twain Elementary School, Barbara Baldrick. Barbara is described by her peers, don't look at my paper. How long did you do a few skills? Barbara is described by her peers as friendly, a teacher, and a conversationalist. Also from Mark Twain, Colleen Foley. Colleen is described by her peers as generous, sweet, and kind. Also from Mark Twain Elementary School, Zara Meyer. Zara is described by her peers as a communicator, knowledgeable, and an advocate. From Point View Elementary School, Barbara Lyons. Barbara is described by her peers, I'm gonna hold this up, keep looking at my paper. Barbara is described by her peers as dedicated, caring, and inspiring. Also from Point View, as well as Charrington, Tammy Martin. Tammy had worked at Point View and Charrington. At Point View, her peers described her as musical, passionate, and informative. Her peers at Charrington described her as creative, joyful, and a grandmother. From Robert Frost Elementary School, Kathleen Crosscheck. Kathleen is described by her peers as dependable, patient, and caring. From Whittier Elementary School, Kimmy Dodds. Kimmy is described by her peers as inspiring, dedicated, and extraordinary. From Glendon Middle School, Joyce Lee. Joyce is described by her peers as dependable, dedicated, and meticulous. From Central High School, Philip Crank. Philip is described by his peers as caring, genuine, and loud. (Laughter) In a good way. Also from Central High School, Kathy Cryer. Do you have her up there? Should I read, or?
I hit her. I hit her.
From North High School, Sybil Carr. Sybil is described by her peers as friendly, caring, and persistent. Also from North High School, Natalie Schamblin. Natalie is described by her peers as kind, gracious, and thoughtful. And next from the district at large, Zulu Cooper. Zulu is described by his peers as Liberia, technician, and support. Also from the district, Sally Torville. Sally is described by her peers as a giver, compassionate, community, and our building crews director. Also from the district, Jenny Winner. Jenny is described by her peers as thoughtful, organized, and fun. From Food Service, Joni Becker. Joni is described by her peers as caring, funny, and a people pleaser. Also from Food Service, Joanne Hendricks. Joanne is described by her peers as prompt, meticulous, dedicated, and also an iPhone and computer challenger. Also from Food Service, Christine O'Neil. Christine is described by her peers as hardworking, fun, and dependable. Also from Food Service, Sandra Popovich. Sandra is described by her peers as smart, dependable, and compassionate. From Food Service, Barbara Seacrest. Barbara is described by her peers as a hard worker, friendly, and energetic. From Food Service, Betty Simmons. Betty is described by her peers as hardworking, patriotic, and thoughtful. And finally, from our Transportation Department, Thomas Goodman. Thomas is described by his peers as a veteran, grandpa, and nurturing. Also from Transportation, Susan Holliday. Susan is described by her peers as entertaining, unique, and clumsy. From Transportation, also, Robert Keins. Robert is described by his peers as irreplaceable, early bird, and honorary. Also from Transportation, Darlene Kowalski. Darlene heard how you were describing the rest of the people, she decided not to show up. Also, from Transportation, Marion O'Brien. Marion is described by his peers as loyal, kind-hearted, and good-humored. And from Transportation, Stephen Smith. Stephen is described by his peers as a captain, precise, and easygoing. Ladies and gentlemen, how about a thunderous round of applause for all of you. Truly, on behalf of the Board of Education, the administration, and all of those that you have worked with, we are extremely grateful for all the good work that you have done. And again, I repeat, 972 years of working hard, experience, and and making a difference in people's lives. Never forget that last part, making a difference in people's lives. We are very grateful to you. Thank you for coming tonight. And I believe that you will, the retirees and the friends and family, if you would like to go out into the hallway, we're gonna do some pictures out there. We'll wait just a few minutes for you all to shuffle out. Now, you're welcome to stay if you want to shuffle. We are just so excited when we get to do that retirement recognition. Those are, as you can see, those are people that are just so deeply loved and have given so much to this district, this community, and our children. And you can see they have a good time with each other sometimes. So, I'm gonna hang out in Transportation. I don't know, they seem like they're an enjoyable bunch there. We are gonna move on in our Agenda Item 3.02. You are, again, for this as well, you are in for a treat, my friends. I'm gonna have Jody Brown come forward in just a second. But this is a video we're gonna show you, she's gonna introduce it. This is a video that I first saw at Central High School during their Arts Alive, what is it? Arts Alive, right? When all kinds of chalk drawing and artistic creativity. It was also International Day. I ate some awesome food. I mean, it was really fun, and people were dressed in kind of some native land garb. It was just a really moving experience. I was upstairs in the media center. I was getting ready to leave, and somebody said they're gonna show this video. Students made this video. Would you be willing to stay? And, sure. So, I sat down, and again, I'm gonna let Jody flesh this out for you. This is why I asked them to come tonight. It was very difficult for me to sit among, there's probably a hundred students in there, and me, maybe a couple other adults. Very difficult for me not to well up with tears. Not all for bad reasons. It was that moving to me. And I had no intention of doing that. I was there for the food. But it was that moving to me. Jody's gonna come forward, she's gonna introduce the students. We're gonna watch this video. Jody works with ESL students. And you're gonna introduce the video, talk a little bit about it, right? If you would come forward, come to the podium, and just share with us just for a couple of minutes before we watch this. Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us all here tonight. It's an honor and a pleasure. Can you hear me okay? First, I'd like to introduce my students who are standing behind me altogether too shy. This is Estefania from Mexico.
My name is Zanjar from Palestine.
Mohammed from Syria.
Fadima from Somalia.
Ilik Sini Mohammed from Kenya.
Hi, my name is Shada from Ghana.
All of these students are featured in the film that we are about to watch. And all of these students are founding members of the new club at Central called Central Voice. The club was started just as a social club for ESL students to have a place to get to know other ESL students and to begin to extend themselves into the life of the school. One of the things that we decided to do in addition to playing kickball and doing yoga and listening to each other's music and eating each other's food and getting to know each other and laughing a lot was to make a film. Mo Al Ibrahim said, "Let's make a film." And I said, "Okay, what do you wanna make a film about?" And then we just all looked at each other. One of the things that I have the pleasure of hearing every day are these students' stories. And they are phenomenal. The things that these students tell me are the things that happen in novels, which is what you're going to see when the video starts. They chose to call the club Central Voice because obviously we go to Central, but it's also a very deliberate attempt to move their voices from the margin to the central, or to the middle, excuse me. And I think you'll see that beginning to happen in the video. So, I think we should just get started.
Here we two, how did I look? Here we two, how did I look? Let's be.
Quiet inside.
Camera two. It was your first day in the school, you know?
It was awful. I had to come here, my first day of school, and take OGDs. I barely spoke any English. And they're like, "Yeah, welcome to America." You gotta take the same sentence.
In Europe, there is a lot of people that talk to us differently. Like, they think that we're stupid or something like that. Especially when the first days that I came to America, it was really hard. And because I didn't have any English, like, my English was zero. I can't talk to them, so they always laugh at me, especially at school. And they think I'm stupid.
Yeah. I thought it was kind of hard, because we didn't know, we didn't understand anything else. But we have children, so it was a... Nothing. Who were in the...
Think confusing. I mean, all the classes and the hallways, they were pretty much confusing.
The first day, I was in sixth grade in the school. I was so excited. But first time I came to high school, I was scared, even a great. I didn't wanna let go of my dad. I was like, I wanted him to come with me. Because I didn't think it's gonna be like this huge, and I was so scared.
It's awkward. I really don't know English, and I was walk alone and go everywhere alone. And we can't move.
Someone asked you, "What's the reason that you're here?" What would you tell them?
Because first, we were just coming to visit here. But at the time, like, the same week we were going, like, the same week we had our weekend travel just to visit. We had the war in our week, so we didn't come back.
My country, for the past twenty years, there have been civil war. Like, it depends where you live. If it's controlled by the government or the Ashabah. So, if it's the government, we have, like, there are places where the Ashabah people control.
Even though, even though there is a war, I still felt peace in there. Like, we were like, some days we were like, when we sleep, we didn't know if we're gonna wake up or not. But I still like, I wasn't afraid, I still felt peace.
Yeah, I feel sad, because, you know, I have been there during the war, and a lot of things happened to me. Like, me and my family was in danger, you know? A lot of bad stories happened to us. We was walking here with my friend in the street, and my friend got shot in the neck from sniper. And a lot of bad stories like this happened to me.
One of those like, military, air force or something, military, also desert. And for clarity, air force something. And like, in twenty eleven, like, the day of twenty eleven, it was fighting with like, the terrorist group called Ashabah. And I had like, the military, they had been crushed or something like that.
Because now I'm not in a place where you can get to your twenty-four-seven. You go inside, it's obvious. So, you see your family dying from starvation. Those want to do a hundred twenty dollars fine just to get something greater than meat. That is not cool, but we come to a place where they say we're supposed to feel welcome. We don't feel welcome, no.
I lost my dad. And I don't know if that is on the boat or something. Yeah.
My life is so changed. It's made me know how to survive and make me know how to be stronger.
I don't know, so, I found it, like, twenty people. She told me that, um, we, that, um, she wanted us to come and live with her. I never had that before. I didn't even, I didn't take it, like, that seriously, but then when I came, it was hard to do this. I've lived like that all my life.
I mean, people think that we are as Syrian people or Arab people, we're all like, bad and we kill each other, we, you know, like each other. But that's wrong. Like, in every country, there is a bad people and there is a good people. The only difference, here there is a strong government, and they hold the people. Over there, we didn't have a strong government. That's why, like, the bad people start killing, and no one can stop them. And like, the other countries start thinking that, you know, we kill each other. All Muslim or all Arab people are like that, you know? We like to kill each other. But we're not like that.
I mean, there's good and bad, and you don't have to judge by both sides color.
If one person, one individual person do something, doesn't mean the whole group, they are bad people. Like, every place, everywhere, in every country, there's bad people and good people. So, if one person go bad, they receive everyone's bar, don't think we're gonna have peace.
When I came from my country, I never felt like someone would don't like me because of my religion. I never felt that about them. Or either like, that there's people, they will hate you because of your religion or because of where you came from. I never like, think or like that. So, when I came here, it was really like, it was beautiful, it was scary.
Most people think my religion is scary. They have bad idea about Muslims. They thinks we came. They are scared about how we dress. If they save a job, if, um, they will be like, they will figure out like, they don't know, they act weird. Muslim means peace. My religion is peace. A group of people, there's a group of people who using our name, Muslim, in a bad way. They killing, they do whatever they want, wanting the innocent people. So, it's sad to find, um, your religions is being called like, bad people.
I mean, yes, because I'm a Muslim. You know, there's a lot of towards like, the women and the girls wearing hijab. So, a lot of Americans don't like it, so they'll start calling us names or acting weird.
My religion, they think I feel proud, is my everything. They don't have to be afraid of hijab. Hijab is my majesty, it's my love to God.
I think that my accent does not define me. Because I have different skin color, does not make me non-human. Because I grew up in a different place does not mean I don't feel or I have feelings.
I want them to know. How hard or how difficult I got here. I want them to know how much I learned.
It's not, how hard it is to live your country.
It's not easy to live your country, and family, and your friends, everything you have, you know?
I mean, I'm here like anyone else, like you or him, whoever's gonna ask me. I'm here for either work, education, or to live a better life.
I would say that my mother is a fighter. She wanted more than seeing her daughters look away, wonder why it's gonna happen to them. Are they gonna come back after they go from school? Are they gonna be safe? Are they gonna have a future? Are they gonna study what they want or just gonna go with...
If someone asks me that question in nice way, he deserves to get an answer. And my answer would be, I'm here like many other kids who are immigrants, who escaped their country because of civil war, hunger, and diseases. It's such a bright future that will be my answer for them.
I wanna be a nurse. I wanna go to, I wanna go to all places that help beyond and to help people there.
I wanna study for surgeon, for college, I studied for student. I told that I wanna help people in my country. And not even, and the second one is even here, you know? I can help the people that need help.
I want to do arts, even though my family is kind of against it. I do my cards, and I come up here. I like to do pictures and to help people. I like to see people have a more, people to show themselves towards.
Who wanna go to Korea? I wanna be at, um, Interior Center.
Uh, I wanna be at, um, interior designer, interior designer. Um, I wanna do art director and be a little design too.
Uh, I hope so I go to college and hope you have a good.
I wanna become a doctor.
I want to be a doctor and I also like to play volleyball.
How about one word, Rem? Board and Mr. We'd like to come up front here, we'd like you all to come forward so we could shake your hand if, if you all would do that, is that alright? Thank you. You can tell I meant what I said when I watched it, Jody, thank you for, everybody that's, that was part of this people behind the scenes and so on. I, um, we just really, one of my colleagues turned to me and said, now I understand why you want us to show. Uh, we are, as we've talked, we already talked, it's really our intention to try and get, get this out. Uh, thank you at Central for supporting this, the team at Central, thank you for just vulnerably, uh, sharing your story. Um, and, and, uh, we could learn quite a bit from you all. So thank you for sharing your knowledge with us. We are, we'll go back behind the table and we'll continue with our agenda. You all are certainly welcome to stay, this is gonna be a long meeting, so while I go sit down, you all screw down. Moving on to agenda item four point zero one, it's the approval of minutes presented at the regular board meeting held Monday, May eighth and special session Monday, May fifteen, we don't take a vote, I just asked her, are there any corrections, deletions, anything? Looks like we're good with those. Moving on to, uh, agenda item five point zero one, we have been going through a pretty extensive, uh, reload, community engagement update and so on. And Dr. Kellogg, I think you're gonna be bringing us a great report here.
Uh, thank you President Valado, members of the board. If, if you would indulge me for a minute, I asked permission earlier to jump in and do a little change in the agenda. So, um, later on in the agenda, this evening, we'll be acting on personnel consent items. And rather than have our new principal for Westerville Central wade through all of this exciting board information, I thought, because I think Keen and his family are interested in getting out to dinner to celebrate, so I thought we'd take an opportunity to, to recognize, um, Tom Lanier, who's being recommended this evening as our new principal of Westerville Central. Got an opportunity to meet some of his students when he was here. Tom comes to us, um, he is currently a lead assistant principal in Pickerington, I think six years as lead assistant principal. Um, that's enough time for anybody to be assistant principal. Um, I know he worked in Reynoldsburg schools, uh, as a social studies teacher for many, many years, uh, or for several years, not many, many. He, um, is also a proud graduate of Westerville South High School and has roots here in the community. Um, and went to Capital University where he worked with, uh, roomed with the great Scott Eber. Did you play ball with him?
I did.
So one-on-one?
Can we say sorry, 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 sorry?
Everyone's got my freshman year, um, I played four years basketball, cattle, and, uh, every time I let play, they're saying.
So we're excited to have Tom here and, uh, will be recommended him this evening, so I know he has some family members here, I thought I'd give him an opportunity to introduce. Yeah, thank you.
So if I could, if I got my panel one, that would be great.
Awesome.
Come on up, come on up.
There's, there's a lot.
Honestly, when I saw the video for Westerville Central and just watched that with the ASL students, um, to me, that just, it's, Westerville Central is a treasure and I'm so excited to be a part of, of what's going on there. And, uh, thank Mr. Spinner for his ten years of dedicated service. He has, he has really put together a great, great school and I'm so excited to be part of it. But this is who I am. I, we run deep out of Pickerington with my kids, my family, everybody. Um, I'm standing here after twenty-five years of education, um, and, and, and ready to, to take over as the Westerville Central principal because of the people here. And I, I wanted to give them a moment if I could. So my wife, Anne, of twenty-five years. My mother, Jan, she's a Westerville resident currently. Um, my, uh, second son, Brian. Matthew, just graduated Saturday. And, uh, if you watch the district final championship for, uh, Pickerington North and Newark, this is a young man to hit the last second shots for Newark. God, he signed a lot of gratifying. Kevin is my last son, he's my fourth son, he's gonna be a senior at Pickerington North next year. Uh, he told me after coming back from Orlando, he didn't need me anymore, so I'm good to go, what I need to do in Westerville. Sean's my oldest son, he actually completed his first year of teaching at Lincoln Elementary in Gehanna. So he's an educator as well. My sister-in-law, Mary Maisick, uh, who works for, uh, the James. Uh, brother-in-law, Bob, uh, Maisick, who does something with logistics. And my mother and father-in-law, Lois and PJ Connor, uh, both are retired and enjoying retirement in Pickerington. So this is the crew, we're very excited, so humbled and thrilled to be part of the Westerville family. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining, thank you for being here tonight, and I know you've been here for a while, but you've seen some pretty powerful moments in the life of the Westerville School District. We are very honored to have you here and you're right, um, uh, Mr. Spinner has set a good course. Uh, Central is a tremendous school, if you just saw, just a snippet of what it is. And we know that you are just gonna carry on with great things as well, so thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you all.
If we keep thinking and bringing people up, there's gonna be nobody left out here, you wanna understand? It's kind of a goal for me. Sneak this stuff right through, no, don't wanna do that. Um, so thank you for indulging that moment, I think it made sense. So as you know, um, this spring, we went through a series of meetings, um, some community engagement processes in order to, um, review and, and update and refresh and take a look at the, 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 both the rearview mirror and the, the, the path in front of us as relates to strategic planning. Um, as you'll see at the end, by no means do I think we're done with that process, I think it's always an ongoing piece. Um, part of the goal was to get feedback from community members today and see how reflected, uh, with community members in, in twenty thirteen and see how everything aligned as we move forward and make sure we're not, uh, missing things. So I'm gonna kind of buzz through a couple of slides this evening. I wanna start here. Um, one of the primary, one of the starting points for us in this whole journey with the twenty seventeen community members was to, uh, get a measure of, of their thoughts regarding our key themes. And you'll see those words again, we've seen them before, that are associated with each of our performance objectives. These are the key themes that rose out of the community engagement process in twenty thirteen, ways that they described each of the performance objectives we had. One of the first measures we wanted to take was, um, we knew how well those words resonated with the twenty thirteen community members, because they delivered the words and then said, this is how we feel about those. We wanted to see how the twenty seventeen participants who didn't create those words, how well those words still resonate with them as descriptors of the school district. And, and interestingly enough, um, so what you see is, um, whoops, wrong button. I'm always pushing the wrong button. Okay, what you see here is, um, on the first column on the left, uh, underneath you see twenty thirteen academic. This is our, this is an abbreviation of our first performance objective, which is every student's academic success. And the words we'll, we'll look at, uh, again here in a few minutes, um, in twenty thirteen. That crew in twenty thirteen, um, rated, uh, strong, good, fair, weak, poor, um, descriptors, uh, how, how those descriptors were, uh, how well they thought those descriptors describe what a school district should be like. Interestingly, if you look next to it, the twenty seventeen participants actually gave a slightly higher rating. As how well they felt those key themes reflected what kind of school district we should have. And that trend kind of hold true for all six of the performance objectives. The next two have to do with the kind of staff we hire. And again, the, uh, strong, good, um, measure starts to rise in twenty seventeen. Um, social emotional learning, SEL, social emotional learning. Again, um, the twenty seventeen group, um, uh, those words resonated with them even stronger than they did in twenty thirteen. Uh, and then under facilities, what kind of facilities we want, again, you can see that same trend, same trend line where in twenty seventeen, that, that group, um, rated it a little bit stronger. Uh, again with community engagement and again with finances. Um, I thought that was an interesting trend. Is it difference in population size, people wanna know, in twenty thirteen? This is the data from those people actually participated in the process. We also asked the community in whole, but this is just those participants, which is about a hundred and thirty people. Of the people, we had a little over a hundred people start the community engagement process with us. Uh, this was done online and, um, about, I think it was forty-seven or eight of the participants, um, completed this end of the survey. So difference in end sample, but the congruence of the results is pretty similar, which is, um, it's a good starting point to know that the foundation from what you're working from, those descriptors seem to resonate with people. And we'll, we'll look at those words again here in a minute. The next slide, um, we, we just pulled out, just for, just for, um, comparison sake, the good and strong. And it, it's the same data, uh, eliminated all the lower end, uh, ratings and these are the, the, uh, the combination of strong and good. And you can see that increasing favorability along the way. The other measure, this was done in the large group meetings, all one hundred participants completed this survey. And so in that large group meeting, as you recall, um, I spent an abundance of time sharing an abundance of data. And, uh, each of the data was aligned to one of the performance objectives. And after the presentation of each performance objective data, we asked the participants to rate our progress. How well do you think we're doing in terms of making progress? And this is those ratings, so of those hundred people that participated in those evenings and completed the survey, um, the blue represents, uh, those that said you're making great progress in each of those six areas. Excuse me, I got pollen or something going on here. Uh, some progress in red, um, limited progress in yellow, uh, and no progress in green. Um, I, I like it, I like that there's, uh, uh, acknowledgement of progress. I'd like to see more blue than red, um, but, um, I think that's a good starting point, uh, for how are we doing in the three years since we started on this work? Remember, it's just a three-year journey, so, um, we'll continue tracking that over time. Uh, again, if you took great in some and you put them together, it kind of elevates it, um, and that's one way to look at it as well, I've looked at. So, uh, favorable response to our progress to date based on the data they saw, and I thought that was good. Question about any of those three data charts? I'm gonna buzz through these, uh, these again, these are the key themes I, I, um, uh, referenced earlier that came out of twenty thirteen that we continue to use as descriptors of what the district should look like. I'm not gonna spend a lot on each slide, I'll buzz through them, we've seen those before. What I wanna get to is this slide. What we have done to date at the, uh, through our, uh, uh, community engagement process, we went through, um, after the data, we asked, uh, participants to give us some feedback about areas where they saw strong progress, areas we needed more progress, areas where, uh, they felt that we shouldn't be spending, it was just kind of a question of why are you spending any time on that at all? It just seems, uh, not a good place to spend resources. And the last one was blank spots, where, where are we not doing work that you and the community talk about, that we wanna know about? We organized all that and we did some rating of those in small groups and we brought all the data together and put it out to a survey of all the hundred participants and say, okay, these are all the priorities that people gave us. Um, rate your top, rate, uh, uh, up to four that you think are high priority. It could be zero, you don't have to rate any of them, or four, up to four, by each, uh, performance objective. So along here are the themes that they rated, the four highest of the people who completed the survey. The percent that, uh, gave them, uh, how many people rated those as one of their top four? So these are the descriptors they gave us in the small groups. This is the percentage of people thought this is one of the, uh, four highest priorities. Here is where we've taken, um, the verbiage from here and looked at it in conjunction with this verbiage back here. So this is where we have said, these words here relate to B, E, F and G and are key themes. No big surprises here, uh, we're, we're calling early intervention a new one, that one didn't really stick out in twenty thirteen as a, as a particular point. I think it's embedded in there implicitly, um, but we wanted to make it explicit, that had a high rating. On the far right-hand side, you know that we maintain a, a quality, uh, quality profile, a scorecard, where we have metrics that we use to measure our progress in these areas. I wanna remind folks that these are areas that we measure, that we think have some alignment to these themes, that we have an idea of progress. So for example, these first two are all about more programs for kids. A diversity of programs, meaning a diverse, a diverse set of kids' needs, college career readiness, uh, career technical readiness, whatever that is, whatever outcomes they might want. Over here, we do track our kids enrollment and college and career readiness curriculum, we've talked about that before, AP, college, uh, college credit plus, right? We track that data. We do track data about the kinds of opportunities we offer beyond required coursework, how many electives, how much opportunity for music, do they have, how much opportunity for art? All that is on the, the scorecard that we keep. Um, intervention for struggling students would relate probably somewhat back to performance on state assessments. That's one measure of how we're doing, grade level to grade level, um, and we look at technology and gifted growth. So we have some measures in here, we'll look at these and how well they give us some information about these, but that's kind of some alignment today. That's how we've organized the data to date from the twenty, twenty seventeen participation. So that would be, this is all around academic performance. Again, we have our second performance objective, which is student learning. I sometimes, as driven by recruiting, developing, maintaining highly effective and skilled staff members, I always abbreviate this one as staff. There's the words from twenty thirteen and that people in twenty seventeen seem to, uh, appreciate. Here's the data. Um, staff training was big, just relevant staff training in general. A focused recruiting, getting staff members to, uh, make sure we're getting great staff, so very focused on our recruiting. Uh, training around diversity, special needs, training in competent technology, um, and that making sure we have enough support staff to keep our buildings running the way we want. We saw a lot of that this evening, didn't we, transportation, food service. I'm wondering who's cooking and serving food next year, because there was a lot of food, and who's driving those buses, we had a lot of retirements there. You can see, uh, in this case, we pulled five. Uh, uh, because the, the numbers were so close, there was an even break. Uh, and then this is how they align to the key themes from thirteen, and these are some measures we're using today. Under this professional development program focused on teaching and learning, we do a lot of measuring about percentage of staff who are participating, particularly in, um, our diversity training and our technology training, so we do track, uh, track those numbers underneath. But I wanted to give you some idea of the metrics. Questions on this one? These are key themes related to social emotional development of students, some of which we saw this evening.
saw this evening. This is how the themes, emerging themes from the 2017 participation. A lot of focus in emotional, social emotional health curriculum, social skills, emotional learning, non-academic character education, looking at behavior, substance abuse, bullying issues, these are all in people's minds. Making sure of resources to this area, and making sure of focusing on the whole child, individual student needs. These are the percentages. I find this one a great one, because as you know, you've just adopted a board curriculum for our guidance councils on social emotional with a survey instrument for students to measure some of those components. So I think we have, that goes to this idea of having a student survey. So we'll have some survey data now around this metric. We do track co-curricular, extracurricular programs, and I think on tonight's agenda, there actually, there's some additional supplemental contracts we're putting in place around La Crosse. Challenge Day is another one that's in there tonight, as well as Interact, which is a rotary deal. And then looking at agency partnerships, I was just offered the opportunity, you know that Concord Counseling is doing a capital campaign, and they invited me to participate in their capital campaign video. So I'll probably end up on the cutting room floor, but had the opportunity to, to talk about our relationship with them, or with Head Start, or with Neighborhood Bridges, or with any of the other variety of programs that we, that we partner with at a district level and at building levels. We have some partnerships at building levels. So these are some of the comments from 2017 group. Our next area talks about facilities. We just had a large work session in that. We're beginning our facility long-range planning and putting together a citizens committee. We want safe learning environments, we want inspiring learning environments, we want efficient learning environments. And we want an infrastructure with technology, and I know that we're doing a lot of work this summer with technology, are we not Greg? We're upgrading all of these wireless servers that are in the ceilings everywhere this summer. We have a huge summer project going on to increase our bandwidth and to meet the demands that we have. And this is what came out from the group, a real, so timing as well, 91% of the participants want a long-range facility plan that looks at progressive design, attention to aging buildings. So we're in the right, right space there based on the community feedback and the work session last week. Couldn't have teed that up better. Safe environment, hugely important one, effective use of our existing facilities and capital funds. So I think the participants will be pleased to know that from the workshop, or work session last week, the request from the board about a long-range plan that looks at facilities, current facilities, funding, I think you're, you're headed on your way towards a huger community engagement process around this particular issue. Then we have one on community engagement. This one is interesting, if, I think there's a divergence in what the 13 group was talking about when they talked about community engagement and what the 2017 group said. We're seeing that in the data. If you look at these words, this has to do a lot with diversity and kids at risk and working with families in that vein. It's less about communication and more about engagement, these words. Access to technology. What we found in this round, whereas last time, a lot of it was about engaging parents and families, there's a kind of a, a difference in this, this year's, where it's more about communication as a means of, of engagement. I know they're, they're entangled, but I think there's a slight change in perspective. At least that's my interpretation, we'll, we'll put it to work. This piece about parents not getting focused communication, family-school connection, this loss of parent involvement at middle and high school, or in a lot of cases, has dissipated, right? We have lots of parents participating in our theater and music boosters. You see that change in, in secondary, where they go from elementary with involvement with PTA and PTO, to secondary where they can become involved in specific booster groups. And the change in that family relationship there. But I think things like parent involvement and course selection is a huge one, that's an important piece. And, and making sure we're paying attention to our stakeholders and community engagement process, communication in general, and specifically about how we communicate with minority populations. I think tonight was a great example of, you know, what I read in there was, how well connected are we to these children's stories and their families? How well do we know them? And more importantly, how well does our student population know those stories? So that, because we're a very compassionate student population. When they know the story, their, their support is tremendous. And I think there's a, there's a bit of a wall there, or curtain behind those stories and their connection with their own, their student population. We've already started talking about this one a little bit, Mr. Veebrance and I, and starting to talk with the principals. One of our discussion points is, we're going to work with our buildings on what is building level communication. You know, we have a communication department, and Greg in his shop does a great job, and I think we do a pretty good job of district communication, two-way communication, listening and putting stuff out and using our social media. But frankly, I've said it before, people are mildly interested about what the district has to say. They are highly interested in their kid's school and their kid's classroom. And, and what, what Mr. Veebrance and I have talked about and we're going to work on is, what is a minimum standard of communication expectations in buildings? So let's bring some parents in and find out, what do you want to hear about? And talk to them about the tools we have for communicating with them. The way we communicate has changed. The expectations of the receiver has changed. It's less about sending me to the website to find it, and more about sending it to me specifically in a format that I want it. And we had that capacity. I'm not sure how well we've shared with people that we have that capacity and how they can set those tools up. And I'm not so sure that we've done a good job of saying to our buildings, these are our standards and expectations for communication and, and community engagement along the way. So we want to capture that. Long-winded. So I think this is one that, that we have lots of work to do. And then the last one is about resources aligned to support student success. This is typically about finances and, and how we share that information, how we, we use those resources. And the transparency around that. What you'll see is, again, getting information, being transparent is, is a high one. Classroom size, and that data was shared in that group, that's, that's a high priority for our community. Spending money in classrooms, high priority. Reducing participation fees was, was fourth in that line of priorities. So these are areas we have worked on. We're going to do the five-year forecast this evening. Interestingly, when I go back to ratings on our performance, that third slide, financial performance was the highest rated in terms of strong and good. People are feeling good about where we are financially and the information they're getting, and we want to make sure we capture that. And making sure that our priorities are classrooms, with class sizes being an important piece of that. And I know that's an important one for folks. So we have some information, we have some information organized. The subset of community members that participated is, is a small but mighty sample. There was a well-informed, invigorated, invested group. But we don't think we're, we don't by, by any means think we're done. We want to continue to get feedback. So we're going to continue sharing this. This information, this presentation will actually be sent out to all 100 participants in an email with all the information, so they have exactly what you got, in case they couldn't be here tonight. We did send it, we sent an email telling them we were doing this tonight and asked them if they wanted to come. They were welcome, but we were sending them the information. We also have, the week of June 5th, the library, the Westbury Public Library has granted us space. We'll have placards up with this data for people to come in, and as they come in the public library, if they want to see it live, they can see those placards, and there'll be an opportunity for them to express interest in participating in additional community conversations in the fall, yet to be determined and scheduled. It'll also be on our website with the same opportunity for people to say, I'd like to participate in further community conversations. So we can get deeper into the, not just the what, but the why and the how as part of this. And we'll continue examining the information and its implications for goals and strategies for us as a district as we move forward and, and look for additional community conversations around it coming next fall. So June 5th, Gallery Walk for New Year wants to see it, also online if they want to see it. Opportunity for other community members to participate. Those that participated will get a chance to see the final, the current, I wouldn't call it the final work, I'd call it the work to date. And we'll see how, how that interaction with the community continues to shape it and, and send it in a different direction. And happy to take any questions or comments or thoughts.
I always have things. There are several pieces that jumped out at me when I started to look at the data. One is, I'm very pleased to see the congruence between 2013 and 2017 as regards to themes. Things are very different in a lot of ways now than they were in 2013, as we always say in my family, that was then, this is now. So it's good to see that there is significant congruence. Yes, the sample size that we have is not a large sample, but the sample itself is a very diverse group of people as regards their engagement with the district and their understanding of what's going on in the district. So I feel compelled to take this information very seriously because of the type of people that have been involved in this. Some of them are the same people that participated in 2013, many are not. So the fact that we have that congruence across two significantly different groups of people is important, I think. The community engagement themes are interesting. You mentioned on that, while the 2013 pieces seem to be embedded in the 2017 pieces, I agree with that. It seems that the 2017 pieces, though, are broader in frame. They're broader, they are in some ways more foundational to the communication of public education. And I do think that in many ways, they drive toward that building level piece. I'm really pleased that you and Greg are already working on that. That's a, an area that is prime real estate for us to really, really, really dig into. And I like the idea of engaging with our parents and our families, and there are a lot of us grandparents out there, by the way, who are very interested in that as well. That's going to be a key piece for us moving forward on how we build that communication structure to a more robust level at the building level. It's not where it needs to be yet, and I think we see that reflected in what we, we hear. I'm very eager to start getting some of those fall community conversations scheduled, get some invitations out to some various groups as other people ask to be scheduling, that would be great. But as we think about, for instance, some of the service groups, or faith-based groups, or whatever, they're already starting to book out their fall agendas. So it would be good for us to reach out and say, hey, we are going to be looking for community conversation hosts, and we would like to meet with your group, get a chance to, to get the word out that we want to be doing that, and start getting on people's agendas well in advance. And I volunteer to help with those conversations as you kind of figured I would in the fall. So this is important information, it's strong information, it's a great platform for us to leap forward and develop additional information that's going to drive us. But there is reason to be very pleased with the responses and the types of responses and the categories of responses that we see here, because they reflect much of what our conversations have been at the board level and at the building level and in the community
Sure. Juan, I am really glad to hear that you and Greg Veebrance are going to be looking at the communication standards at the building level. I think that, that's a really good opportunity to really have a positive impact even on parent engagement. So I think if we can standardize some of those expectations and maybe communication methods, if you make it easier for parents to understand what's going on, it's easier for them to be engaged, right? One other thing I wanted to ask about is, with the facilities work session we had, we had talked about maybe looking into another entity to do a facilities assessment besides CFCC. Is that the right acronym?
OFCC.
OFCC, okay. And I wondered if you had any chance to do that?
Not, not in the week. So Mr. LaRose had suggested, what I had talked, taken away was, Mr. LaRose had suggested that that might be something we can manage through his office with relationships with vendors he has today. I have, I spent actually this afternoon looking at two other school districts and facilities reports that they had commissioned through other firms. I actually shared these with the board several months ago. I was going to revisit those with you as well to take a look at, because part of it is, regardless of who does it, there are certain elements I think we want in it. And if we're clear about what we want in it, it'll make it easier to decide who we want doing it. So I'd like to talk to Mr. LaRose some more about what's in those reports, to get his understanding of that, and make some contact with other districts to talk about their process and how that went. The two that I've been looking at that have gained most interest with me was Upper Arlington's and Worthington's. Now Worthington's is actually a proposal that was made to them from a firm to do it. One of the elements that's embedded in both of them is that entity developing and supporting specific community engagement activities at the community level and building level as, as, as part of the process, which I think is going to be important to move this thing forward. So looking at those and looking...
I'm not sure.
Was it mine?
That sounds like it might take quite some time. So it, it might be evolving into something maybe in addition to what we were initially looking at, rather than just kind of a, you know, independent assessment beyond what the OFCC might do. So I'm not sure if I like the extra time that might require, so.
Well, they're phased. So in both cases, they're... I think it was this guy. So they're, I think, they're phased, and maybe it's just me. They're phased in that they always begin with having the facilities assessment first and then moving from there. So the, the community engagement part is done after the, the assessment part. So it, they are doing the same kind of report that the board was looking for as part of that.
But more?
Well, then what you do with the, then what you do with the assessment report when you start to build recommendations and, and help build a public knowledge about that is using that assessment as the next phase for community engagement, right? So there's having the assessment, and then there's having the, the engagement piece. So looking at, at what these firms do and what their costs are and their timelines are, and talking to Jeff about what he feels he can do is what we're working on.
Okay. How long do you think it'll take to get more information?
About the assessment or?
The assessment.
We have a meeting with OFCC on Wednesday to talk about where they are in the timeline, and then Jeff and I'll sit down and talk about how our, how their timeline and our, and what we want to do internally would parallel.
Like a third-party assessment? How long would that take? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. The other thing I was thinking and looking at your presentation on the strategic plan and the community engagement, we got related to the strategic plan, is I do think that our engagement process with using the strategic plan was somewhat structured. So I think that may have lent itself to some of the similarities and themes. So with all the information we were providing to participants based on the 2013 strategic plan, I think that may have lent itself to a lot of the similarities that we see. But I'm glad to see that there are some new, new items included as well, so.
The, the part we haven't analyzed yet is on several of the surveys we did, there was also open-ended, and we haven't analyzed those comments. So on the key themes, for example, where we said, okay, here's the words from 13, what do you think? And then they rated, there was also an opportunity to provide comment about things they liked or things they thought were missing or things they want changed. We haven't gone through and analyzed that yet. So that's a component of what we need to do as well from, from the key theme piece, because I, I don't want to, it's one thing to ask, well, did you like it? Well, yeah, I kind of liked it. And then you don't ask them what they didn't like or what they did like. So we have those comments, we need to go back and analyze those as part of that as well, yeah.
Okay, that sounds great, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you for the report. I just wrote down a few things here. I agree with you that facilities cropping up through this process and us kind of pushing that along, there's a good juxtaposition there. I think, I think that will work well. Look forward to hearing from this meeting on Wednesday. Is that the meeting you are attending? Thank you for doing that, thank you. The community engagement, the grade level... The community engagement, the grade level and the building level communication, I think that's really awesome. I know that from my own kids' building, I get lost in the mix of information that does come and doesn't come, and I think it's all good to try and figure that out. I like the fact that it sounds like our finances and our trying to be more transparent there gets pretty high marks from those who participated in 13 and now. I appreciate that, and certainly Bart's office trying to facilitate that through Expectations June 5th gallery walk. I think I'd echo probably Nancy's comment, and I know you know this, that you hate to admit it, but people are planning things for the fall and the winter now. And so for us to try and figure out the community groups that we want to definitely target and then kind of a broad shotgun approach as wide as, you know, I do a little bit of community engagement and process with organizations. I know Dr. Nestor Baker does as well. I know that Jerry and Tracy understand this as well. We just want it to be a continuum, a just constant infusion of information and feedback in any way we can do that. And Jerry has talked about a couple of times, making sure we have a voice of students somewhere in there, advisory committee, and maybe even try to figure out some groups that are a little more, I don't know, outlier to the, like the group that we had here tonight, you know? Just could be some very interesting information there. However, we can facilitate that process. I think we're anxious, interested to do that. So that's really just my thoughts. Anybody good? Are we good?
Great.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item 6.01, we're just up to 6.01, friends. We're just there now. Jill is ordering pizza even as we speak. Oh, she's moving me on. Sorry, Jill. 6.01 is public comments. We have no public, right? We have no one signed up for public comments this evening. Moving on to financial. Speaking of financials, 7.01, "I would like a motion to approve the financial reports and investments for April 2017. Financial report lists all funds ending in April 2017." So a motion and a second, and I believe Bart, you're going to be speaking to this?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll after you give us information. Trying to move us along, Jill. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Members of board, just to update the financials, year-to-date receipts for general fund are $165.7 million. Year-to-date expenditures are $135.9 million. We have an unencumbered fund balance of $104 million. Year-to-date receipts for all funds, we've received $213.4 million. We've spent $180.8 million, and we have an unencumbered fund balance of $125.2 million. That's for April.
Thank you. Josh, just making a note. Any questions, comments about that? Please call the roll. Bart?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item 7.02, 403B Plan for Westerville City Schools. Bart, you're going to be talking about all of these, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is this also a motion?
Yes.
Motion and a second, please. I thought it was.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Members of board, this is the, it's called a specimen 403B plan. I know it took some abuse for the word specimen, but that's what it's called. This is our 403B plan. It governs what we do and what we offer for a 403B plan for Westerville City Schools, and we need it updated because we've made some changes. Okay?
That's nice, a little biology.
Yeah. Okay, yes. Would you please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. And moving on to agenda item 7.03, OASBO 403B Plan, a second and a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Members of board, this is an update as well. We go, this district went through, it used to be ING years ago, and the OASBO, it was an OASBO-sponsored plan. They went basically most of Ohio, and it was just an ING plan. It was, they worked out a deal with OASBO. Well, ING changed their name to Voya this past year, but also the OASBO plan worked it out where not only it's a Voya plan, but AXA is part of that, another 403B company. So they've created a new OASBO plan with both of those companies. And since we participate with that, we also need to approve that plan as well.
And would you like to tell people what OASBO stands for in case they don't know?
It stands for the Ohio Association of School Business Officials.
Okay. Just in case people didn't know. Any questions about that? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. 7.04, Resolution to Approve the Updated Five-Year Forecast for Fiscal Years 2017 through 2021. A motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Bart?
Mr. President, members of board, this is an update to the five-year forecast that we did in this past October. What I've tried to do is keeping in the same theme as I've done in the past. There's a lot of slides in here, so we'll put this on the web, or our website. I kind of put a lot of stuff in here that it's going to be hard to see here, but if you download it, it makes a lot more sense and you can see things. So I'll kind of go by fairly quickly on those slides. But just to give you updates individually to show you where we are today and what we said in October and the differences, and hopefully explain what some of those differences are. Hopefully you can enjoy my slides show today. By golly. All right. Purpose of the presentation, same thing, and as I say this every year, to me, this is a learning experience, and maybe this is one of the reasons the community understands this a little bit more, is because I've tried to keep this the same every time and update it and be specific on what they're learning. Okay, Tracy? You okay? All right.
[inaudible]
Okay. Purpose of the presentation, by law, we have to do this twice a year, and statutorily we have to do that. And just so you know, if we, the state, Ohio Department of Education actually looks at this to make sure that if we were projecting a deficit in the next two years, they use that information to work with boards of education to figure out, is there a plan to get out of that? Now, we're not in this case, but that's one of the primary reasons of this forecast is to make sure that districts don't get into financial trouble. Okay. I know you can't see this at home, but I always do this to make sure everybody understands what you're looking at and how to read this, okay? So luckily, I can, my clicker, John is only right here. I can actually be, "Uh-oh, they moved me?" Oh, by golly, it does work. Okay. The way you read this at home, because I know you guys how to read it here, this first left column tells you what we're looking at, whether it's revenue expenditures. The next three columns are actual histories on those three columns right there. This 2017 line right here, for those guys out there in the camera, is the fiscal year we're in, and the next four are the projections. So that's how you read it, okay? So let's, I'm not going to dwell on this one because it's too hard to read from here. What I tried to do with this one was just to focus on revenues. That's all this is. This slide is just revenues. This is all the revenues the district receives. One of the reasons you see the line up here in yellow, because originally, if the levy would have failed, that line would have been impacted greatly. I left it yellow because it was yellow in October. I also tried to, you can kind of see the lines, I tried to keep the same colors. For instance, the general property tax is its own line, the public utility as well as the property tax, the ones that are kind of a pink, that line there and there, are what we get from, part of, the property taxes we get from the state. The blue lines are the unrestricted grants and aid and the restricted grants, and that's also state foundation. That's why I give you those. And so again, I'm not going to go into too much detail because this is hard to see, but in the next slide, I tried to break this down a little even further for you. You okay, Tracy? All right. This is the general property tax. One of the reasons we are, the levy did pass, so the dollars are up. We also use a company called PFR, and I tried to put their initials down at the bottom. Sometimes they help summarize some of these questions. We have seen some property tax increase more this past year since October 2016. We do receive about 99% of the annual current tax revenue billed by the county auditors collected for us. And so we're up in collections as well as we had some increased valuations for the dollars, and so that's why you see the $912,000 increase over what we said in October. This is the tangible personal property and homestead rollback, and I've used the word rollback, but it's actually owner-occupied credit. And so you can see the two lines, what we said we were going to do. The public utility is up. Again, this is because there was growth occurred in the business investment and utility infrastructure. So the dollar value that we're up is right, this $334,000 is where it increased since what we had in October. Okay. State foundation, one of the things I put in here for state foundation, for these last year, the state does allocate $6,000 per pupil. We actually see $2,330 of that per pupil because of the valuation of the district compared to the other schools in Ohio. That's just how we compare every year over year. One of the things we have in state foundation is for the last four years, we've enjoyed a seven-and-a-half increase, percent increase over what we got the prior year from the state of Ohio. And the reason that they, this will be important in a minute, is the increase is a cap. Prior to that, you might have saw 2% or 1%. The cap, and what I'll talk about in a minute, is because the state doesn't have enough money to pay their bills, they basically cap districts so that you can only receive a percentage more than you got the year before to stay within their budget. For us, we have 7.5% this year. The state budget is ending at the end of this year, June 30. They're voting on a new one, hopefully coming up soon. In our forecast, we assume a 3% for the next four years. If the state gives us 6%, 5%, whatever, it's better for us. I think one of the governor's budgets, I think, proposed 5.5, and the House had it at 5. The state was at 0, the Senate, so who knows where it's going to end up. We show 3s in the next four years, over the next four years.
So why'd you choose 3? Just curious.
Well, for the most part, it's not going to be 5, or excuse me, it's not going to be 0. The state's going to give you something. Is it going to be 7.5? Maybe not. Is it going to be 2? Maybe. 3 is a conservative. I mean, if I were to say, "We don't know what the state's going to do, let's put 0s," that's not really realistic. And if I say we're going to do 7s, well, that's pretty optimistic. And, you know, I don't want to be making assumptions based on 7.5 and the board vote back 2s or 3s, and so 3 is a conservative estimate. It's an assumption. At any time, you know, if people say, "Oh, I think the state's going to give us 4s or 5s," well, what do you base that on? And so 3 is conservative. For every 1%, it's about a $400,000 difference. And so I'd rather be saying, "We got more than we got less." Okay? In this case, one of the reasons, the state, you can see the decreases. Sometimes they go back, and that's what happened in this case. They went back over fiscal year 16 and recouped some of the money that they basically overpaid us based on their assumptions. That's why you see a decrease of $435,000, is they took that back from last year. So that's why we're decreased there. This is what I was talking about, the state cap. The bottom line, which is this line here, you guys, I know you what the bottom line is, but when we talk about the state cap currently in fiscal year 17, if there was no cap and we got what we said, the 2,300 per student, we would have seen an additional $7.7 million, almost $7.8 million more in this fiscal year without the cap. But because of the cap you're capping, with our assumptions at 3, you can see the next four lines are 10, 10, 11, and 10.5. The cap actually grows because we have 3s as an assumption. They're not giving us what they should. So if they were to give us 7s, 7.5, you would see that the cap would probably drop a little bit. We would see more money, so the cap would drop. So right now, when I say we're a capped district, that's why. We're not getting everything that we should be receiving. Okay. Other revenue, one of the things, this reason you see $600,000 different, some people, for instance, let's say I bought a new building and I paid $6 million for it. If I go to the county auditor and say it's only worth $4 million, well, the county auditor notifies us that there's a change, somebody's asking for a change in revenue of classification. As a district, we always file an appeal so that our voice is heard, because if something happens, the county auditor says, "Oh, yeah, you're right, I gave you $4 million versus $6, but that's what you paid for it." Well, it's like, wait a minute, that wasn't the process. So we always file an appeal to have our voice heard in the process. If we go through the process and they do the appraisals, and they do everything you're supposed to do in the county auditor rules, and they follow the process, we let it go. Okay, fine, you did what you're supposed to do. But we always file an appeal. People sometimes think we're being mean. We're just doing it to keep our voice in the process. But then we had a case where there was a discrepancy, the vendor, the person who owns this property was going to a border revision hearing and to a state hearing. Well, there was a settlement made where they gave us a cash settlement. That's why you see a kind of a $600,000 jump in there. We can't plan for those. We don't know who's going to make those kind of settlements. And so that's the reason you see a $600,000 increase was in part because of that border revision settlement. Uh-oh. Well, Jill? We're stuck. No. Oh, there we go. Awesome. This screen here is a forecast compare. I just took all of the revenue that we said we were going to, the column on the left is 1129, 510 is the column, and then it shows you the difference in just the revenue. You see the $912,000 in property tax, $334 in the public utility, and so forth. The total revenue was $1.1 million increase over what we had in October. Then there was the $384,000 of the total other. What that basically was, was the Medicare payments we got paid for the 14, 15 school year, and so we don't put those in the forecast either because we never know when we're going to receive them. So you can see what the total increase was roughly $1.5 million in revenue above what we said in October. Any questions so far? Jill, you want to advance that for me? Thank you. Revenue overview, same thing. One of the things that this helps us, the additional revenue, and combine with the expenditures in a minute, but the deficit in 2019 actually reduced down to $692,000. It was close to $3 million. And in 2021, it's actually down to $15.5 million, which originally was going to be $17.4 million. So with the additional revenue and some of the expenditures, we'll show you in a minute, the deficit has been reduced. Expenditure assumptions. This is just to give you some of the line items that we deal with. 3.01 is personal services. By far, that's the largest expenditures of the district. It's roughly, I think it's 65, close to 65% of everything we spend is just salaries. One of the things we did, we added staff in fiscal year 17, which is increased the number of staff eligible for experimental steps. We always take into consideration how many people are retiring. We always look to try to see if we can do a BA 0 or up to a master's plus 5. We try to estimate what kind of staffing we're going to have. But the 3.01 is personnel, and we've assumed a 2% annual cost of living increase in the forecast. Could be higher, could be lower, but we try to assume a 2% cost of living increase across the board for all staffing in this assumption. Okay. I won't go over this in too much, but what I did with the revenue, I did with the expenditures, this is all the expenditures on one whole line that shows you what the forecast looks like just for those lines. So let's go in a little personal expenditures. You can see that in October versus today, we're actually projecting that we're going to reduce that line by $1.6 million. A lot of that has been to do to HR for staffing, getting MBA 0s, masters 5. We also put some extra in there, from my office puts extra in there as a contingent of what if. So if something, we have a lot of maternity leaves, we have to hire somebody mid-season, we try to put extra money in that column as well to, just to make up the difference. Or if somebody comes, like HR comes to us sometimes or a curriculum and say, "Hey, I need more money," we kind of build a little bit of contingency in that line as well. So at the end of the year, though, that line will be down $1.6 million. Retirement system, this is just the retirement. One of the things on our retirement system that you all are aware of, we always put 8% in our retirement is what we think for insurance is going forward in the district. We use the number 8%. In calendar year 16, I think the retirement went up 3%, a little over 3%. In calendar year 17, we froze it at 0%. So there are savings in there as well, and we tried to calculate those as much, so there's not a lot of change in there. But we, going forward, we still have 8%. But we, going forward, we still have 8% in there for the, the growth for medical, just so you know. Industry standard is 10, we use 8. Purchase services, which would be attorneys, utilities, we were pretty good there. We're only $240,000 off out of a $20 million budget. That's 1.1%. So you tell, and we, one of the things we tried to do for utilities is we've had pretty good winters for the last two or three. We had expected a little bit larger one this year, but it was, still wasn't a bad winner. Supplies material, we're, again, we're up a little bit. We've spent $265,000 more in supplies material. Not sure why, but it's not that bad. I mean, it's up a little bit, but I know more and more money, we are trying to get more and more money into the classrooms. Capital outlay, one of the things that you'll see on the fiscal year 16, we were at 2.9 million. This year, we're at 3.3. That was the Point View project. We had to encumber the money in 2016, but we actually paid for it in 2017. So when everything came due and we got paid, we actually decreased it by $129,000 in that line item. Other objects. Educational Service Center is the line. Payments to other government agencies, Franklin County, Delaware County Auditor. We, we do pay roughly 2% to them for the collection of property taxes. But we did increase that line by $235,000 this year. Transfers out, we do, I think we do this usually in the fall. We transfer to two places. We transfer $65,000 to the turf replacement fund, which we may have to have a discussion later on. I don't think that's going to be enough. We may have, bless you, we may have to increase that transfer at some point. We'll have to talk about that later, but that's what's in there for now, is we transfer $65,000 to the turf fund. The other thing we transfer out, the, the students that have free and reduced lunch that, that don't pay the fees to the buildings, the general fund covers that cost, and so we transfer that cost out as well on that line item that goes to the building so that they do have the money for the students. Here's an expenditure comparison that shows you the difference. Basically, at the end of it is we're down $928,000 in expenditures for this year. And so expenditures dropped to 163.3 million dollars. And you can see the lines where they, where each of those came from. Overview, we've had staffing increases over the past couple of years. Health insurance premiums again, purchase services, other expenditures expected to grow. We, in our forecast, we try to put percentages on all those lines to make sure we try to keep within the trends. So that's why you see the 1.5 to 5% as an expenditure. Here's the graph I just threw in. Per pupil expenditures, Westerville's, if you're looking at home, Westerville City Schools is the first gray line. Lakota is the next one. Hilliard is yellow. Worthington is kind of a green. Pickerington is the next greenish-yellow, and then the average. This is expenditures per pupil since 2011 through 2016. You can see that Westerville is pretty much, well, we are below the line, I think, on every one of those, in every one of those years. Says the district's fiscal year 16, total expenditures increased $365 from the prior year. But our expenditures hover around 10,741 per student. So we're, we're well within line of, of those school districts. This was a comparison, I won't dwell on this one, this was just a comparison of both the revenue and expenditures in one easy line. Somebody looks at this online, they can kind of figure that out without going crazy. This was even more summarized, just looking at revenues, expenditures, this is just another comparison of this, a snapshot of the five years forecast without all the individual pieces and parts. So if somebody wants to just say, get down to this and say, what's the bottom line? This is kind of the bottom line. And this is just even the bottom line defined. So basically, the dollar difference, the total revenue, we were increased 1.5 million. Expenditures were decreased by 928,000. The revenue surplus is basically, we collected 2.4 million dollars more than we brought in. The cash flow balanced at the end of the year, changed by that 2.4 million dollars. Here is a general fund revenue, just pie chart to give you basically where the money comes from. Real estate is by far the biggest one. Unrestricted aid is, which is State Foundation is the 25%. That's the other, this is the two largest. Expenditures, salaries are 57%, benefits are 19. Some of the, I always point out, because we had a member of the community talk about, well, your purchase services include the ESC costs where we get our substitutes. So some of that percentage is also paying for substitutes. So it's not just, you can't just take the 57 and the 19. You'd have to add probably 6% from the purchase services for a total cost of salaries and benefits. But the purchase services are listed because we pay the ESC for that service. And that's it. Any questions? It's kind of simple, really. It is. It's a great forecast. I mean, I, I try to be fairly conservative. And if the board ever decides they want me to be not conservative, we can certainly do that. But I try to be conservative and it, it does build in some extra, you know, layer of protection in there. Okay?
I like you being conservative.
Okay. That's fine. This is an update.
I like your fancy electronics you're putting on.
Oh, well, this is, and keep in mind, this is an update from October. And this next October will be another forecast, and we'll have, and we'll know what the state's going to do at that time. You know, we could, we'll change it, what, based on what they do. So this was just an update. Yes?
Yeah, I was going to say, first, I do like your transitions.
Oh.
Makes it a little bit more fun. But also, I, I appreciate, like Tracy said, that you're being conservative with your estimates for the pieces of revenue and expenditures that can fluctuate from year to year depending on what happens and what other people decide. So that, I think that's really been helping the district.
Thank you. I appreciate it. One of the things I, I, I don't think I can get back to on here. One of the things that we talked about, the, one of the lines I always look at is 6.010. It's the excess cost, revenue versus expenditures. In 2021, we, are, we will be spending 14, excuse me, 15.4 million dollars more than we're bringing in. That's manageable. John, John and I will work on that to manage that. I know the goal, John has always said, nothing new to '22. So we've still got work to do to, to maintain that. And people say, yeah, but you've got a cash balance of, you know, $72 million in 2021. Well, we do. And at some point, we'll have to talk about what you want to do with that, if, if anything. But can this district get to 2022? I think you can. It's manageable. We have it manageable. Especially if the state comes through and gives us another, you know, 7% versus the three we have in there. That's huge. So could this district get to 10 years like the goal is? I think they can. We just have to watch what we spend and how we spend it and the timing of it, and try to be accurate with what the state's doing. And, because it is, I think it is doable. I think we can watch it and make sure. And at the same time, I know John's very interested in making sure we put more money in the classroom and different things, and we'd have to be deliberate about that. We can do it. I think you can achieve everything you want to achieve with the funding we have and get to 2022.
I want to also thank you, not only for the fun approach you use, but I thank you for the consistency of delivery of this report over and over and over. It makes it, as you said, much easier for members of the community to keep up with it. Makes it easier for all of us to keep up with it. And it also is an excellent transparency tool. It's difficult to hide anything when you are deliberately being as open as we are being with these finances. I also think it's great to keep the conservative approach that you're using. I hope that we're still conservative enough as the state continues to make its changes. The one thing we never know is what's going to happen with the external fund sources and how those are going to play out over the biennial budgets of the state. But right now, we are in good shape. We are in solid shape. We have the ability, as you say, to continue to do the things that we know we want to do. Sometimes we know we aren't doing as fast as we might like to do them, but we have the ability to do them in good time and still stay off the ballot as long as we possibly can. So thanks, Bart.
You're welcome. And keep in mind, the state, like I did say, it's a two-year budget. We have, we have threes for the next four, but then even if the state does come out, it's a two-year budget. So that will only affect, you know, 18 and 19 fiscal years.
It's important, important to keep in mind. We're waiting, we're waiting not just for their numbers, but we're really not waiting for the numbers for the next six to 10 years. We're waiting for two-year numbers. And really, obviously, all, all of my colleagues up here, we would much prefer a, a more conservative approach. And I, and I think you bring that, and I think Jerry, as your liaison, has continually had an eye on the finances, as does each board member. I think we, we look at it as pretty deeply, actually. And I'm, and I'm appreciative of your authenticity and willingness to kind of dig deep into the numbers with us and frankly, with anybody in the community that, that needs that kind of help.
And we try to keep these as reasonable assumptions. Are they the right ones? I don't know if you're, I mean, if the board says, well, I think this is reasonable, we change them. But we try to keep these as reasonable assumptions. You know, I always picture my head meeting 10 people in the corner and asking them the question. And if I think what the answer, you know, I'm not talking to myself, I guess, but I try to think, what would those 10 people say if I asked them on the street? Would they be, you know, what would the answer I think they would give me? And I try to keep those as reasonable assumptions. So at any time, we can change them, but I think those are reasonable assumptions that we have.
Thank you. Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. 7.05, resolution to approve the application for one-time records disposal. Motion and a second.
Moved.
Second.
Mr. President, members of board, this is an annual process that we do. My office prepares all the records to be disposed based of, based on our records disposal list that we have, the number of years. You know, we have a list that talks about every record and the number of years we have to hold them. These records are eligible for disposal, and so each year, we bring these to you. We have them boxed up, and once you're, you approve them, we send this list to the Ohio Historical Society, who has a certain amount of time to look for, see what they want. And then if we don't hear from them within three weeks, we dispose of them.
Hearing, no questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, we move on. Thank you very much for the thoroughness and, and just keep encouraging us to ask questions and to dig deep for the community. Agenda item eight, Personnel Consent Agenda. We have 8.01 through 8.13. Unless there's a question or objection, we'll take this as a group. We okay with that? Okay. A motion and a second to take this as a group, 8.01, 8.13.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Good evening, President Velardo. We've been here so long, we've killed the battery.
You want to sit here? Just want to, you want to sit here?
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains 13 sections involving 786 persons. 8.01 is the retirement of one classified employee. 8.02 is the resignation of five classified substitutes. 8.03 is the resignation of one licensed administrator. And I'd like to take just a moment to thank Jill Carfania for her service to Westerville. She'll be leaving us for an opportunity in the private sector, and we wish her the very best. We also have the resignation of one teacher and one supplemental contract. 8.04 is the leave of absence for two classified employees. 8.05 is a leave of absence for two teachers. 8.06 is a change of assignment for three classified employees and three temporary changes of assignment. 8.07 is a contractual status change for seven classified employees and one amended item. 8.08 is a contractual status change for one school nurse. 8.09 is a variety of one-time payments for 300 teachers, mostly our summer opportunities. 8.10 is the reemployment of 11 classified administrators and two employees, two classified employees. 8.11 is the reemployment of 32 licensed administrators and 341 teachers. 8.12 is the employment of one classified employee, two extended school year contracts, four substitutes, and one amended item. And 8.13 is the employment of one administrator, Mr. Tom Lanier, who you met earlier, our new principal at Central. We also have the employment of six teachers, 42 extended time contracts, 11 summer intervention tutors, and four athletic events assistants. I believe Bart wanted to mention something about one of our one-time payments?
Yes. On the one-time payments, you probably saw, there's a ton of coaches that we put on this agenda for hire. One of the things that this district has been working with, with the athletic directors and Scott Reeves, Lori Lofton, Lori Hendricks, my assistant, Mark Hershizer, is this process of a change where we had to take, because of the Ohio High School Athletic Association ruling that if you're receiving a supplemental, you can't receive pay for summer coaching. And so one of the things we've been working with is we've basically come to the consensus that what we will do to have summer camps is we will have our coaches who potentially are receiving supplementals from us. For instance, we could have a basketball coach doing a nine-and-under camp. And so in order for, to, to keep our people safe, because it's really, they're, they're the ones that are risk if they receive money from booster groups, and somebody reports them, their teaching license is at risk because they're not allowed to receive money from any outside group other than us if they're receiving a supplemental from us. And so under summer camps, if we have a coach who's, a teacher who's also a coach for us, does a summer camp and receives pay from a booster group and somebody reports them, their teaching license is at risk. So one of the things we've been working on was a way around that. And one of the ways around that is if we approve them as one-time pays, we have the individuals who are receiving supplementals from us, it doesn't include volunteers for summer camps. But if it's a supplemental, if they're receiving a supplemental, they're to keep a timesheet. We pay them, we've agreed to, if they turn in a timesheet, we'll pay them, pay them $22 an hour. But then in return, the boosters would actually pay for that person. They would make a donation to the board in that amount, plus all the other parts, the retirement and everything else. They would make a donation to the board. Now, they can't tell us what to do with that donation, but basically, then the board could pay them. And that's kind of how we've agreed to deal with that. So that's why you see all the coaches on here that may or may not do a summer camp, but we have to approve them first before they do the work. So that's why you see a large number of people. We are still working on band and theater to make sure we're all consistent in this. I know there's some issues we have with that, but we're trying to be consistent and we're trying to be fair with everybody and keep everybody out of trouble. Is it, is it a problem for the board if somebody gets paid? No, it's a problem for the employee. We're actually trying to protect them. So we're still working on those. So what you saw here was coaches. I don't think we have anybody here from theater or band or anything else. We put coaches on here for now because that's what's coming at us next. But that's why you see them on here.
Just, I think you said Ohio High School?
Ohio High School and Ohio Vice Code.
It's really Ohio Ethics.
Ethics Commission.
Commission is the one that put out, and Ohio High School put out a joint publication, Ohio High School and some other agencies, OS.
It's BASSA, OSBA, Ohio High School Association, the Ohio Cardinal Council. There's four or five large groups that put that conference, information out to us. And I know from southwestern city schools, one of the things that they do is they, they have the same process. But they also make it very clear that if, if there is a person who's receiving a supplemental from us, does receive money from an outside source, whether it's boosters, anybody else, they make it very clear that we will report you to the Ethics Commission. Okay? There's no exceptions. If you, so going forward in this district, if we have an athletic coach or whatever receiving a supplemental from us, based on the Ohio Ethics Commission, the Ohio Vice Code, they cannot receive any money from any outside source. And so we're making it, by, by doing what we're doing, paying them, we're also telling them, don't do that, or, or we will report you to the Ethics Commission. Because we're trying to actually keep them safe.[1780.03] Because we're trying to actually keep them safe. It may not seem like that, but we're trying to keep them safe.
And I appreciate your explanation. I want to say to my fellow board members, I want to make sure that you all are comfortable with this process. And I say that because I served on the District Athletic Council, I'm serving on the District Athletic Council, and we've talked through a few issues. And this is one that we really looked at, and we came around to the idea that this was a way of protecting our teachers and from, from making a misstep inadvertently, perhaps, and putting, putting their licensure, their, at risk. And so how can we honor the work that's done? How can we honor the athletic booster groups that are interested in furthering opportunities for kids within our district? What is the best way to do this? So we did look at other districts and other opportunities. So I, I'm comfortable with this, but I've been talking about it for a while. I want to make sure that you all, if there are questions you have or ideas or concerns, that you feel free to voice those.
I'm okay with how you're handling it for the athletic boosters. I do think that it may be, we, we need to look at some of the arts-related boosters. It may not be the same situation, and I think that it's probably not going to be able to work the same way for them necessarily. There may be some specifics there that need to be considered.
I agree. We have to continue to look further because the way that we're handling it for the athletics, I just don't see it working for the other components, the other curriculars. And I know we're going to continue to look at that, and we do understand the difficulties within that. Not sure if the other districts are facing that yet. If anybody else has any ideas on how they're handling it, or if we're all muddling through this ourselves together.
I just had a chat with Bart earlier today about this, and he's going to start looking at other school districts and asking them what they do. Yeah, it's, I'm concerned about it, too, just so we can make sure the kids have opportunities.
Immediate concern right now is athletics because we have summer camps that are going to be starting very soon. I know the band has issues as well in their planning. So we'll try to get some dates on how we can meet some people to work through this. The end result is, we have to comply with, if it is part of the Ohio Ethics Commission or Ohio Vice Code, we have to work within those constraints.
Yes, we do.
Interesting enough, I think, yeah, we need to figure out the arts piece of this and theater and all of that. I think it really just came to us because of the code and Ohio ethics. They specifically addressed the athletics side. They didn't specifically address the other side. So we took on what was given to us initially. So we're just saying, I think, we need to keep looking at that. But really, board members are absolutely right. Right, this is where we're focusing now, but the other needs to be addressed. Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Bart, for Lori, for other? Okay. Would you please call the roll, Bart? Thank you, Lori.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on, again, Lori, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item nine point zero one, final reading, the academic calendar 2018-2019. Greg, you going to share some details with us on this? A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the board. Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith. The board held its first reading on the proposed 2018-19 academic calendar on April 10th. And by waiting until this evening for your second reading and hopefully approval, you have more than met the required thirty-day window to receive feedback. Nothing surprising in the feedback. The opportunity to provide feedback was made available to the community and parents over the last month. I would say that, to try to summarize, we were about a third and a third and a third in terms of feedback, once again proving there is no such thing as a perfect academic calendar. What we had were about a third of the people saying, you know, one hundred percent, yep, this is great, about another third of the people saying, boy, it sure would be nice if we went back to the old way of starting later and ending later in June, and then about another third that were raising some issues with, well, it would be nice if winter break was longer and if spring break was held during this part of the year instead of at the last week of March. And then just sixteen people with other things that had absolutely nothing to do with the calendar that we were looking into. So the trend in what we heard followed pretty much what we had heard in previous feedback in those calendars that you have approved. So with that, once again, on behalf of the Calendar Committee, whom I would like to thank for their work on this, we would recommend approval of the proposed 1819 calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Hebrants. Any questions, concerns? Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item nine point zero two, final reading, revised policy 8320 regarding personnel files. This is a final reading. Let me ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And are there any questions or concerns about this? This is a final reading, so you all have been through this before. We know this is about, any concerns? Good? Okay. Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item nine point zero three, final reading, revised policy 8340, letters of reference. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, Nancy.
Doesn't matter, whoever.
And a second. Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns about this? Again, a final reading. We've been through this a couple of times. Any concerns, any thoughts? Mr. Griffith, please call the roll.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on, agenda item ten point zero one, first reading, revised policy 2461, recording of district meetings involving students and/or parents. This is a first reading, so no motion and a second. Yes, you're going to be sharing with us?
Yes. Good evening, President Velardo, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. I'm here tonight to recommend that the board approve an update to Board Policy 2461, recording of district meetings involving students and/or parents. The update is being recommended to prohibit the use of one- or two-way audio, audio communication technology as a covert means to listen in to district meetings by placing such devices in a student's bookbag or on the student's person without express written consent. Based on the above, I'm recommending that the board approve the updated version of Board Policy 2461 as proposed. Do you have any questions?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. Any, any questions at this time? It is just first reading. We will be looking at it center. But any questions at this time? Okay, thank you. Moving on, agenda item ten point zero two, first reading, revised policy 5630.01, positive behavior intervention and supports and limited use of restraints and seclusion. Holy moly.
I'm also here tonight to recommend that the board approve an update to Board Policy 5630.01, positive behavior intervention and supports and limited use of restraint and seclusion. The update is being recommended to emphasize the importance of PBIS to academic and social behavioral outcomes for all students, to specify that a timeout does not constitute seclusion, to add the requirement of an assessment and monitoring of students for injury or psychological distress after the use of physical restraint or seclusion, to add the requirement that law enforcement or emergency response personnel be contacted if the district personnel determines that restraint or seclusion is insufficient to maintain safety, and to notify parents of their right to file a complaint with the Ohio Department of Education regarding an incident of restraint or seclusion. Based on the above, I'm recommending that the board approve the updated version of Board Policy 5630.01 as proposed. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, ten point zero three, first reading, revised policy 8210, school calendar. Did we not just approve the school calendar?
Hello again. This is a school calendar policy matter, which is actually fairly simple. In the past, you may be familiar with, the school districts now have the ability to make up any calamity days in excess of the five by using Blizzard, Bags, and Online Lessons. In the past, the superintendent used to have to submit a plan to the Ohio Department of Education and have that plan approved. As a result of Substitute Senate Bill Three, that legislation eliminates the requirement for that request, and the language simply now authorizes the superintendent to implement a plan. And so the proposed change to this policy reflects that change as proposed and approved through Senate Bill Three, granting the superintendent the right, without having to seek approval from the Ohio Department of Education, to implement online makeup for excess calamity days.
Very much. Agenda item ten point zero four, first reading, policy 8305. This is information security.
Yeah, President Velardo, members of the board, I have before you a new policy, 8305, information security, recommended for adoption. This is a new policy recommended by Neola. As I read about daily data breaches every day, it's extremely important that the district protects our data with security protocols. This policy will help protect data about students, staff, and vendors by creating security protocols with individuals, with individuals that have been granted access. This policy will require anyone with access to certify periodically that they are complying with these security protocols. This policy will require appropriate training related to the controls of security protocols. Failure to adhere to this policy may put the data collection by the district at risk and require disciplinary consequences. Administrative guidelines will be created for the controls necessary for these security protocols. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? It's the world in which we live, isn't it?
It is.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Agenda item ten point zero five, first reading, policy 8310, public records.
President Velardo, members of the board, good evening once again. Policy 8310 does cover the district's release of public records and complying with public records requests. This is a very important update, in my estimation. It is intended to bring policy up to date with recent changes in the law. House Bill 359 established Ohio's Safe at Home Address Confidentiality Program. The proposed revision to this policy, as I said, brings us into compliance with the results of House Bill 359. The Safe at Home Confidentiality Program allows domestic violence victims, victims of violent crimes, victims of menacing by stalking and human trafficking, to secure an address confidentiality program number, which is assigned to a post office box at the Ohio Secretary of State's office. That is used for that individual's address for all governmental records in Ohio. So this allows the true address of victims to be protected from disclosure. It grants them the freedom to register to vote, to register a vehicle, and to complete many other government forms without the fear of disclosing their home address to perhaps an abuser that may be searching for public records. So with that, we would recommend approval of this policy update.
Thank you, Greg. Again, the world in which we live, and thank you. Moving on, agenda item eleven point zero one, approval of the class of 2017 graduates from Westerville Central, Westerville North, and Westerville South. So moved.
Speaks for itself.
Second.
And a second. We are just beaming with pride and excited for Saturday.
Big, big day for students, big day for staff, big day, big day for parents in the community. It's a, it's a long day for us, but one of the more satisfying and rewarding days that we have, so.
Absolutely.
I'm ready.
Yeah, we got, I mean, yeah.
Breakfast tonight. Awesome. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item eleven point zero two, memorandum of understanding between the Westerville Board of Education and the Westerville Education Association. I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Who is going to speak to this? Explain this.
I have this one more, did you want?
About who?
You. Any of us could take it, but Lori's better at this.
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the board, Mr. Griffith. I am here to present this evening a memorandum of understanding for your consideration. This is an agreement between the administration and the board and the WEA to add these supplementals to the contract provisions for this next school year prior to our entering bargaining and adding them permanently. You've been involved in these discussions since the early conversations on these. It would add lacrosse supplementals, be the challenge, be the change club advisor in Challenge Day, interact club, science safety committee representatives at both middle and high, as well as a few adjustments to the schedule for cheerleading advisor for this upcoming school year.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns for Lori, or Dr. Kellogg, or even Bart? None at this time, thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item eleven point zero three, donations. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We say it every time, and we mean it every time. This district continues to support this district in ways that are very moving. And sometimes it's just an individual, sometimes a couple, sometimes it's memory of someone that they've lost. Sometimes it's a company. But whoever it is and whyyever they do it, we want to say thank you in many gracious Please call the roll, Bart.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Agenda item eleven point zero four, overnight out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
These are trips for some of our students, and when they say out of state, it's, some of these are out of state. There's a group from South, North, and Central, Social Studies, going to Japan in June. And South, North, Central also, the Global Scholars. You remember, I'm talking to the audience. Do you remember, we just spoke to Global Scholars, Louis, that last meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That was an awesome program. Anyway, they are doing a trip to Paris, France, and Barcelona, Spain. And then Dr. Kellogg's favorite, there's a cross-country retreat in Logan, Ohio.
Nice hilly country there is down in Logan. We good for him.
That's true. Girls cross-country from north. We fully excited about these opportunities for these students and are grateful that we have a district that, that can help support this. Motion and a second, we did. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. We are up to agenda item twelve point zero one, public comments. We have one person signed up, Mr. Rob Wesley, is going to share with us this evening.
I have, do I have a working mic? Yes. Yes. Mr. Velardo, board members, Dr. Kellogg, Bart. I hadn't planned on speaking, but there was a discussion, and I just wanted to give a little bit of context. I, as you know, I'm the president of the South Instrumental Music Boosters. And first, I want to express, we are very appreciative of the district for the support that you give to the music programs, to the theater. And as a booster group, we are also always wanting to do what we can to further the experience of our students in the arts, music. I just want to raise, I guess, some special differences between athletics and music and theater, and some suggestions as you approach this. As Bart mentioned, we do have a deadline as well. I'm not trying to put pressure, we just, we always want to work within the district. We don't ever want to do anything to put any of our teachers, instructors, staff at risk. So we're really looking for guidance and clarity, as much as anything. Some things that would help. When you When you talk about a music director, there's an impression of what that is. I don't know that it's well-specified for our supplementals, or if it is, I'm just not aware of it, exactly what's in that supplemental. Because when you talk about a marching band, there's the direction on the field, the instruction, but there's another piece to it. There is what's known as writing the drill and writing the music. The music that a band performs is derived from known works, either licensed or in the public domain. That writing is a separate function. And I know in the past, the question is, is that writing of the music, is that writing of the drill, part of a director's responsibility or not? That really needs to be clarified. Secondly, I know one of the things with athletics that has to be watched for is Title IX, making sure that both genders are addressed equally. With the arts, we're fortunate in that we have pretty much a 50/50 mix of genders. So, to address that, we feel that you're actually addressing the Title IX very appropriately. Trying to think of other aspects that you really need to think of as you're kind of reviewing this. You're right in that the Ohio Ethics has really addressed more towards the athletics. The, the other thing that the Ohio Ethics talks about specifically is around those on supplemental. But what they don't address is those that aren't on supplemental, but aren't necessarily doing a one-time camp, maybe doing things many times, perhaps once a week, perhaps three times a week during an entire season. Those are the things that really need to be thought of. Theater as well. I, I know in terms of theater, you have costuming, you have building of sets, as well as the direction. So, hopefully, we can, we can come to something, as I said, we want, as a booster group, just want, and all our booster groups, just want to do everything we can for our students. Thank you.
And we're well-aware that the booster groups are just a tremendous asset to this community. So, thank you very much. Moving on, Agenda Item 13.01, board comments. Who would like to begin sharing?
My gosh, I don't think we should say much, but congratulations to the retirees, the kids that came tonight, we the people, absolutely amazing. Thank you so much for sharing that. That was eye-opening and something that everyone should see, especially here in our community. I think people would be shocked. I loved it, I enjoyed it, so thank you. I think that's it. I'll see everyone Saturday. Excited for the graduates.
Awesome. Thank you. Who else?
Nope, I'm going to pass tonight.
See? You'll pass too? Gives me more time. I'm.
Oh.
Jill just quit, by the way. No, just, really, just a couple of quick things. One, awesome retirement, just, that was wonderful. And thank you, my board colleagues, and Dr. Kellogg and Mr. Griffith. I, I, I saw that video and, and really said, "We've got to show it." Well, that's 15 minutes, it really. And all of you, thank you so much for believing in that and now seeing that we, we really want to share that widely. And I started to talk to some people in the city about that. We're going, we're going to talk some more about that. I, I'll just give you one example, really, I'm not going to talk long. I went to, this is, this, along the lines of performing arts. I went to, and it, and it happens to be at Westerville South, so I'll cite that. But we do signings for athletic scholarships. I went to Westerville South's Performing Arts Scholarship signings. And it was, I, I just, I just, I, I was just, it was so really cool. And it was one of those things that made me hit my head and say, "How have we not, how have we not done that normally? That's just a normal, why have we not done that?" And those kids were just as excited, and one kid did the athletic thing, ripped off his jacket and showed where he was going, and, you know, just kind of all this. And, and then, really, the main, the, the most awesome part was they had cake. So, really, you know, because if you want me there, get cake. I'm pretty much there if there's cake. Okay, my board colleagues are clearly finished with me now. Hit the gavel? Is that what you said? Thank you all for indulging us tonight, the length of this, but this has been, in my opinion, just me, and I think you would concur. Some really, really wonderful stuff here tonight. Agenda Item 14.01, the board will meet in regular session Monday, June 12 and June 26, 2017, 6:00 PM, here in the Early Learning Center, and we are excited for Sunday. I would like a motion Saturday. Well, we'll probably be there Sunday, too.
There'll be cake.
There'll be food. Throw this again. May I have a motion and a second for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Please, please, please call the roll.
Ms. Cottler?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, we are adjourned.[1786.13]